Afternoon and welcome. This is the August 19th, 2024 work session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through their doors to your right. Proceed to the right and down the stairs. If the hallway is blocked, exit to your left, down the hall and down the stairs. Do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. Public comments may be heard after each work session item. If you plan to speak, please fill out a form on the table near the door you came in and give it to the city clerk. Following this work session, City Council will convene in a special meeting. Before our agenda, we'll have the city attorney give an opinion on public comment.
Certainly. So the source of council's rules and policies are rooted in Section SC 2-6 of the Charter, which states that City Council shall determine its own rules and order of business. Pursuant to that Charter section, Council adopted rules, the first being Resolution 737. And those rules have been amended a number of times since. My understanding is the rules were last amended in 2014. I also understand that Section 6, specifically 6F, has been somewhat questioned or asking for the interpretation of that. And that section provides, "Council President shall accept public comments from citizens during council consideration of an item in addition to the general public comment period." Council, which drafted the rules back in 2014, and it has the exclusive authority to determine its own rules, which also means its authority to interpret those rules, has interpreted them as follows. Council has never allowed for public comment before an ordinance is read at either first or second reading. It is my understanding from speaking to the clerk's office that since 2014, the way that rule has been interpreted is to allow for public comment at work session and to allow for public comment at first reading, which means before any ordinance is passed for second reading, the public has had two opportunities to speak on that particular item. And so again, that's how it has been interpreted since the rules were passed by the, by Council back in 2014.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. All right, we'll move forward with the Wycomico County Public Schools Community School Strategy presented by Tara Obarski, Supervisor of Family, Community, and Schools Programs. Ms. Obarski, actually, if you want to come right here, yeah, you're more than welcome. Yes, absolutely. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate the time that we have on the agenda today. I also want to recognize really quickly, we have a few of our community school coordinators here with us today in the back row. And I'll be talking a lot about all the great work that they're doing at our community schools. So I wanted to recognize them because they're doing this hard work each and every day. So I wanted to start with this illustration because I think it's pretty powerful. It shows you the invisible baggage that our students and our families bring to the classroom, to the school, each and every day that we don't see. We might see in the form of a behavior or something, or engagement or interaction, but we don't see this. But we have to address this if we want our students to be successful in school. And so the Community School Strategy is all about addressing those non-academic barriers, as well as the academic barriers, to improve student outcomes, but also strengthen families and make our communities healthier as well. So it's a very collaborative, community-based approach, which is why I think the outreach and awareness at the community level is so important. So a community school is a hub that brings together these integrated supports that I just talked about. But it's a partnership-based approach that really involves our community, our families, and our schools together. The community schools here in Maryland are identified based on percentage of poverty, which they use the free and reduced meal rate over a three-year average of the schools. And it's a formula-based grant that looks at a threshold of 55% as of this year. So any school with a three-year average poverty rate of 55% or more is identified as a community school. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in a few minutes so that you can see kind of where we started, with how many schools we started with and how many we have as of this coming fiscal year. Community schools are a strategy, that's really important to note, not a program. So we're really looking at a community school being a place, but also a set of partnerships that brings those resources, the community resources, to our families. It's a holistic approach to our families and it's about integrated support. So not just academic supports, but mental health, physical health, social services, building youth and community development, and also that community engagement piece. So again, it's a very collaborative effort. So it's also part of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, and it falls into Pillar Four of the five pillars that are included in the blueprint. And it's about, again, more resources for student success. There's a big, long definition in the blueprint legislation. I'm not going to read that to you. You certainly can read it on your own. But basically, what it means in a nutshell is it takes a village, right? It takes a village coming together collectively and collaboratively between the community, the family, and the school. And if you think of it like a triangle, the three points of the triangle are the family, the school, and the community, with that student-centered focus. And we're all coming together for the good of not only our students, but that return on investment that we're going to get as a community when those student outcomes are improved and then they become those productive citizens in our society that we need to grow and support. So key ideas about community schools, like I said before, it's an asset-based approach. So we're looking at the community surrounding that community school. What strengths are there? What assets do we already have in our community? So for example, let's look at West Salisbury Elementary or Salisbury Middle School. In that surrounding community, we have the Stone Grove Community Center, we have Perry and Gates Barber Shop, we have faith-based partnerships, we have businesses. So we look at that and we asset map. What are the assets in the community? Let's collectively look at those assets, pull those together, form partnerships if we don't already have them, enhance existing partnerships that we may already have, and figure out how we can come together to address the needs of our families and our communities. I told you before, it's a holistic approach, really looking at the foundation. We can't expect our kids to come and sit in a math class and excel if they're coming in with food insecurities, or they're coming in with unstable housing, or if they're coming in with mental health needs. So unless we're going to look at that foundational piece first and foremost, we're not going to get the best academic outcomes we can, and those students aren't going to be able to reach their full potential. So community schools are not a new concept for the United States. They've been around since the early 1990s. But in Maryland, we've just had them around for about the last five years. We just had a few schools become community schools in 2020, 2021, and it since has grown since 2020. You can kind of see what community schools were back in the 1990s and early 2000s and where they've evolved to now. And this is really about what's in that blue box. Today's community schools continue to evolve with the enduring goals of removing those barriers to learning, improving student outcomes, supporting families and communities in their overall well-being. So it's not just a limited project, it's a strategy. It's not just adding a program or an event, but it's a whole school transformation. And I do believe that this is transformative in its approach if it's implemented with fidelity. You can see in fiscal year 24, the distribution of community schools. Twenty-two of the 24 LEAs in Maryland had community schools last year, and you can see how many. You can see that Wycomico had 10 community schools as of last year. That's over a little over 400 schools in the state. This year, we're at over 600. Wycomico County Public Schools has 23 of their 24 schools are community schools this year. So all but one have been identified in this new fiscal year, which brings a lot of resources and a lot of benefits. So the Concentration of Poverty Grant allows us to hire a community school coordinator for each of those schools. And we're going to talk about their role in just a minute. But we've more than doubled in just a year. So we have a lot of work to do and a lot of outreach and awareness to build. So the community school work should fall under four main pillars. The first pillar is expanded and enriched learning time and opportunity. So this is all about connecting students with internships, connecting them with opportunities for student service learning projects outside the school. This is about after-school programs, it's about weekend opportunities, summer programs, because we cannot do all this work in a six-hour day within the four walls of a school. We have to make sure that we're offering these expanded and enriched opportunities for students and families. The second pillar is the Integrated Student Supports that we just talked about. That's addressing those out-of-school learning barriers, whether they're academic or non-academic, social-emotional development, academic learning, physical health, social service needs, all of those non-academic school barriers. The Active Family and Community Engagement is the third pillar, and that's about promoting those positive interactions and relationships with our families. We want our families to feel comfortable coming into the school. We want to be able to go out into the community and engage with our families. It's about relationships, and it's about building those strong relationships so that we can do this, this work together. And this is also about parent education opportunities. So we want to make sure that we're offering opportunities for parents to also excel and become stronger, whether it be a parent workshop on social media, or a parent workshop on, on home ownership or financial literacy. We want to make sure that we're offering those types of opportunities for our families as well. And finally, the fourth pillar is the Collaborative Leadership and Practices. This is about the collective approach, all of us banding together, all the key stakeholders that have a stake in this, building that culture of trust and shared responsibility, because it's going to take all of us to do this amazing work and to come up with the, the best outcomes. So within that, those four pillars, the work that our amazing community school coordinators are doing, they have to make sure that they're approaching this from the standpoint of wraparound services and supports. And these are some of the ones listed in the blueprint, just for reference. So the Extended Learning Time Opportunities, Safe Transportation, Vision and Dental Services, Expanding Our Health Services Within the School Building, Additional Social Workers, Mentors, and Counselors, Enhancing the Physical Wellness of Our Students and Families, the Community Engagement Piece, Our Collaboration with Early Learning Centers to make sure that the students coming into our schools are more ready to enter the school, ready to learn, and addressing some of those non-academic barriers early on. Enhancing Behavioral Health Services, Improving Our Student Attendance, which you'll see some billboards out and about in Wycomico County that were just posted today about the importance of attendance to school and chronic absenteeism. So keep on the lookout for that. Professional Development, about how to identify a student who needs a support, Student Enrichment Experiences, and Overall Improving the School Climate and Learning Environment. So they have a huge undertaking, as you can see, in the wraparound services and supports, but we need to make sure we're addressing all of these areas. So, community school coordinators, will you just stand real quick so they can see who you are? So this is only about, what, a third, about a third, or no, a fourth maybe, of our new community school coordinators. And they, as I said, they have a really big job. Thank you guys so much. They have a really big job in the work that they're doing. And this is the major roles that they have. One is the Community Outreach and Awareness Piece. So I'm here talking with you today about this, but they're also doing this out in their communities and in their schools. They're, you know, sending out postcards, they're getting yard signs made to put out. So anything we can do to raise awareness about this strategy is what they're working to do. The second thing, most important in the first year as a community school, they have to lead the successful completion of an asset and needs assessment. So I talked about that a little bit, the asset mapping, partner inventory. Where are the gaps in our partnerships in the community? Where do we need to enhance that? And then getting feedback from our families, our students, our staff, and our community. What are the needs? What are the, the main three themed areas of needs in that school community? And based on all of that data from surveys, focus groups, and quantitative data, they come together and form an implementation plan. And in that implementation plan, they are looking at, what are the three themes of needs? Okay, what are some goals and action steps that we can plan for the coming year to really address these things that we're hearing from our families and our community? So I said this at the beginning, I'll say it again, I think I even said it in my email when I asked to speak to you guys today. We're stronger together. I mean, we can't, each of us as separate entities can't do this alone. And I think that this strategy is imperative, and like I said, can be transformative. And I'm just hopeful that as we continue this journey and we bring on so many more new community schools, that we will have the support of the community in these partnerships and this work that we need to do. So I appreciate, again, your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have before I turn it over.
Well, first, you know, thank you, Ms. Obarski, for that presentation that definitely highlights it. And again, this came about from one of our neighborhood walks where, where one of your, your community school coordinators was there in, in the community. So we appreciate that aspect. And I, so two things that kind of stuck out to me was that return on investment. Again, I know it's, you know, you're using a financial or mathematical term to identify with a student, but it is. Again, when we identify that our students, we have to, you know, pour into them what we want to get out. Again, if we want them to be asset-rich and to be, you know, thriving community partners and a part of this community, then we have to give them just that. So thank you all for being a part of that, part of that village that we need to get back into. And second thing, the, the assets-based approach, and I'm glad you all are here because I think for, for years, or I don't know, up until now, public schools and the city council, I don't think that's ever been kind of a unified approach. I always wondered, that's kind of, you know, it's, it's a startling, because again, we're all city council members, we all have our districts. And in that, in those districts, we have students who go to the schools. Again, it's not part of the, we're not the county council or the, or the Board of Education, but those are our students as well. So we want this to be, you know, an approach where, where you all go back and forth. And if you need something from the city and from the council, please don't hesitate to ask and vice versa. So again, send us the emails, send us, if you have events, if you have things where you, where you need, you know, some, some additional hands or some things, definitely reach out to us, because we want to be there, but oftentimes we find out at the last minute. But we're city council members, we're representatives for the city, so definitely let us know when you, when you all need support. That's what we're here for. That's, that's the oath that we took, is to provide support for all the residents and also the little ones as well. So thank you all for, for what you're doing here.
Thank you.
Ditto. It's wonderful. Obviously, I think you're fantastic. I think it's wonderful. In the mid-'90s, there was a grant through Maryland, it was a statewide program. And it had an unfortunate title, and everyone tried to get it changed, the Hot Spots Communities. But East Salisbury, actually, I do want to shout out to them, were one of the first schools to do a community approach. It just didn't sink as well as it is today. It's taken all that time to sink that philosophy. So it's fantastic to see, and I know firsthand you guys do a great job with reaching out. And I do think it's important that the city is involved in what's going on with schools. We do have the kids in our community, and we want to make sure we have community centers and after-school programs. And we've done a really good job with the Truitt Street and Newton Street, but I think we need to do more. And I think Ms. Jackson has, has been saying that and been on that bandwagon for a while, another place on the west side for sure, for tutoring, mentoring, and that's the piece of that whole wraparound, you know, getting them for that, after, those after-school hours are prime. And it also will help crime go down, things for our kids.
So again, thank you. We want to be that support as well. So send us, you know, you have our emails, you have the clerk's emails. So again, if anything where you think we can piece up support, let us know from anything small on up to graduation. We don't get the announcement, you know, send us that. We want, we want to be there for that. So let us know. We want to provide that support. We want to be there and be a part of this village as well, because we are that.
Thank you.
I have a question. How do you go about getting your community partners?
So the first step that the community school coordinator takes is that assets and needs assessment. And the first part of that is a, is a partnership inventory. So talking with their school staff, their families, and their, the current leadership at the school. They identify partnerships that they already have in place, whether it be a faith-based partner, a business partner, an agency partner, or a community organization partner. And then they figure out where are the gaps, and they do the asset mapping to figure that out. What's available in our community that maybe we don't have a connection with yet, that we need to build a connection with? So that will be their first step as, as a needs, doing their needs assessment as a community school. And then it's about reaching out to those partners, talking to them about the strategy, the benefits to the community as a whole, and trying to form that relationship with that partner so we can start to do some work together for our families.
Do you have, I'm hoping you do, with teachers, when you have buy-in from the administration of all these schools, do the teachers then participate in any PD that would bring them into this whole community concept even more so than what they're observing in their own classroom?
Yes. So this is only, I'm only finishing my first year in this role. Last year with the, last year with the 10 community schools that we did have identified, I went out and did some presentations at faculty meetings along with the community school coordinator, just to give them a brief overview again of what the strategy is, what it means. But the, the new thing this year with more MSDE guidance and support is they brought the lead school leadership in to do some more engagement with them so that they can continue to share that message with their staff. And I'll continue to do that with the staff this year and try to get to every school, because I think it's important, like you said, for the buy-in piece, because we don't want to just be telling them something. We want them to be engaged in something. So our instructional leadership teams, our faculty meetings, those are all places where we will be spreading this message and raising the awareness at each of the schools about the strategy, what it means for them, what it means for their students, and how they can be involved. And of course, the needs assessment, they'll be heavily involved with that because we'll be getting their feedback in the form of surveys and focus groups.
I'm so thankful it's not one size fits all, and you're customizing it for each of your schools. That's paramount.
Well, they're so, the needs are so different, and some are, some are the same, but so many are different. And we need to make sure that it is individualized to that school's community and what they need.
I did see Pemberton, about maybe a month or so ago, frequent the Village of Mitchell Pond. And that was really amazing. I didn't get to spend time because I had an appointment. But when, what I did see, I did like, and to me, that was a partnership in itself, because that's a need in our community. That's a big need in our community. The school system coming in with the families, not just the children, but with the families, because it's about the family. And, and if you, if, to get to the child, you have to get to the parent. So I thought it was very, very remarkable that you all were out there. I don't see anybody, I think it was Trina, was it Trina Tillman?
Trina Tillman-Dix, she's the Judy Center Coordinator, and we're, we have a partnership with them, so we're, we do a lot of things together.
Yes, and I would hope to see you all out there again, and I would love to see you frequenting the communities more so than, you know, because I think it was, you were with Rachel, Rachel Manning was a part of it. And I'd like to see a lot more of that, because then that makes the community feel comfortable with the school system.
We actually have multiple schools going out this summer, doing summer pop-ups out in the community, as well as a summer lunch program. We're at Doverdale Park, we're at Stone Grove Community Center, we're at the Greens Apartment Complex. What am I missing?
Pemberton, yeah, Pemberton.
Leonard, Leonard's, Foxfield. So they are definitely getting out into the community more and trying to meet our families where they are so that we can engage with them.
You appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing a lot of the buckets. I'm sorry. I just want to touch on them real quick, you know me. I'm seeing, I'm looking at all the wraparound services that are defined in the blueprint, and I'm seeing a lot of buckets in this that touch on the disabled population and the students. But I'm not seeing anything specifically towards that. I mean, like expanding health services, vision and dental, physical wellness, behavioral, all of those sort of things, all of the services. But is there anything that's included that, is there anything that you guys do that specifically reaches out to children with disabilities and their families? Because I can tell you, as someone who, I would have loved to have had this when my son was growing up, but trying to navigate the education system with a child with a disability is incredibly difficult. Is there anything in this that specifically targets those kids?
So I can tell you what we've done so far. We've held some Parent Success Nights where parents come out and they are able to choose from a menu of workshop topics that we've heard from families that they're, that they need. And some of them were around assistance and support with students with special needs. We had an autism support workshop, we had a navigating the special education system workshop, we had one on kind of routines at home. So there were various topics that were covered for families to choose from that would provide support in that area. But I'm open to any other suggestions that you have. Again, this is about feedback from the community. So if there's more other different things, ideas, we are very open to hearing them.
Well, that's fantastic. I love it.
Yeah, is this grant distinct from the disparity grant?
This is the Concentration of Poverty Grant.
Okay.
Yeah, and it is, we, we receive a personnel grant, which is to, like I said, to hire the community school coordinators at each school. That's a requirement of the grant, as well as a healthcare practitioner, which is the, the RN at the school and the health center at the school.
I think the principle is kind of the same as the disparity grant. And then, you know, for a while, I talked to county administration about this, that, you know, it's based primarily on poverty levels, which the city has a disproportionate amount relative to their population to the county. And it would be nice if we could take that earmark, which is astutely going in their, their surplus, to address some of the things Michelle just brought up, and that it wouldn't be helping them, wouldn't be helping them and helping us at the same time, helping the same population from a pocket of money independent of our.
Certainly wouldn't turn you down.
Yeah, I'm with you. I'm with you. Okay.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Obarski, thank you so much. We appreciate you, the community, uh, community school coordinators. And then I see Mr. Paul Butler there as well. So thank you all for coming out and, and for, for coming to our meeting. We'll pivot now to our Arts, Business, and Culture Director, Mr. Alan Swigger, to talk about some accepting gift of the Haren mural for, from the Salisbury Arts Alliance.
Hello, buddy. How we doing today?
Mr. Swigger, how are you?
Good. So, yeah, you kind of hit it on the nose there. Salisbury Art Alliance, formerly known as the Arts and Entertainment District, would like to donate the Haren mural that's currently located at 213 West Main Street. This is on the side of the city center, facing 50, if you're familiar with it. Our intent is to work with Mr. Thatcher, the artist originally who designed it, get him back, relocate it. We've identified a couple of spots we have to finalize, make sure it works, and give it some new life and new visibility.
Two questions. Okay, so one, do you know how long this has been there?
Gosh.
It was installed in June of 2014.
Okay.
That makes sense.
And, yes, and it can be, I thought it was, I guess I've always thought it was on the building, like on the, the building. So it's, it can be moved?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's about seven two-by-fours that run vertically all the way up the inside, so you're just screwing it off and putting it back on another building.
Wonderful. Counsel, any other questions or comments?
I think it would, I think it would be nice putting a note card and say, as a fundraiser, to use the picture.
Yeah, I mean, it's a renowned, it's a renowned piece.
It's cool.
And if we're, if we're going to move it, we want to get it on some city property where we can take care of it. And we do have the funds allocated to go ahead and bring some new life to it. It needs touching on.
Saying no public comments, council, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, great. Thank you, Mr. Swigger. Moving forward to ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter, enter a contract for, with Maryland Humanities.
Yeah, it's a, it's a small grant, but it's a mighty grant. So I wanted to bring Caroline, who is our Events and Culture Manager, as you well know, who manages the Folk Festival, to talk about it a little bit.
It is a micro grant for Maryland Humanities program called One Maryland, One Book. And I had a meeting with the Maryland Humanities Network months and months ago and heard about this. It sounded amazing. And what One Maryland, One Book is, is that Maryland Humanities selects one book that they want every Marylander to read, to bring our community together and to talk about issues that, while we may not be facing them in the book, that there are talking points that we can share. The book is What Storm, What Thunder, and it's, it's a fictional book told from very different perspectives of different characters that takes place in Port-au-Prince during the 2010 earthquake. It's, I, I thought, very important for our community to share because of the large Haitian-American community that we have here. But also, you know, it's bringing people together to talk about what do we do when we're faced with extreme challenges. So at the festival, what we're going to use this micro grant for is to buy some tablets, headphones, whatnot. And I am going to be reaching out to our friends in the Haitian community, as well as others, to read very small passages from the book in different voices, because the book is told in different voices, so that festival-goers can come up and listen to parts of the book, and then hopefully walk right across the street to the library and get a copy or take one of the 15 copies that we have that we'll give out throughout the festival. But I thought it's a neat way to engage our festival-goers with this program. I hope we can do it each year.
Caroline, wow, this is, I don't know if this is within your scope, but I think this goes, you know, you're going above and beyond, you know, just, just that events manager title. So, and, and I mean, just, you're speaking to the culture portion of, of your department. So thank you for this, and I make sure, I'm going to make sure I find this little tidbit so I can hear it. But this sounds exciting. I mean, I'm now excited to, to, to listen to this book, maybe not read it, but listen to it. So, but thank you for, for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, saying no public comments, council, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, yes, and thank you all so much.
Thank you.
And we have one more, an ordinance approving the budget amendment for the city's FY '25 budget to accept and appropriate funds from the community foundation.
Yeah, correct. So we have a community foundation fund set up, Winter Wonderland Fund, that used to be managed by a group. It was moved over to us last year. We did pull out funds. We did pull out funds last year, we got a good jump on revitalizing some of our renowned, uh, pieces down at the park. The 1,700 is what you see as like our interest that we gain from it every year, so every year we will come back to this same conversation, and I'll ask for seven, to take that 1,700 again. So we've identified a few pieces that, uh, we're looking to just refresh and get them back in the park and get them in nice working order.
Good. Any, uh, any updates or any, uh, highlights, anything you can give us, or I know the community was, um, you know, concerned last year for the lights, or anything that, you know, we have on the horizon that's of, of good news?
Uh, nothing finalized. We've had a couple, uh, conversations with community stakeholders, some different folks to figure out, um, how we want to do it this year. There's been thoughts around, you know, doing a little bit bigger of event down at the city park and driving some people. Uh, there's also been thoughts of, you know, bringing some stuff downtown and creating a nice little scene down here.
Okay.
Uh, it all takes money. Seventeen hundred dollars can do a little bit. Uh, so, it's a matter of just kind of, kind of sitting in a room and finalizing a direction that we want to go. But, um, we are intending on doing our tree lighting ceremony like we did last year, or I can say tree lighting, holiday light.
Holiday, yes.
That we did do downtown, so we are gonna do that, uh, nonetheless, but, um, yeah, at least get some of these pieces.
Well, thank you, Alan, for at least, you know, putting some focus into it, I know the community appreciates that. Seeing no public comments, council, do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swigger.
Thank you.
All right, we'll pivot to the fire department, uh, for a budget amendment from Chief Rob Frampton. It's been a little while since we've seen you.
It has, it has, how's everybody?
Good.
And Texas was hot.
Texas was hot. Triple digits every day, so it's good to be back here, even though it's a little humid today. So I've got a little bit of a lengthy explanation on this, I just want to give a little bit of history and background on the request. So, uh, in the fall of 2023, the department conducted a vehicle surplus sale on GovDeals for the sale of Truck Two and Brush 16. That sale closed and the city received 238,187.50. On January 3rd of 2024, ordinance 2841 was passed, which appropriated funds from the sale of those vehicles to various projects and accounts, much needed within the fire department. One of those projects was the renovation of the kitchen at Fire Station 1. We allocated 142,000 of that 238,000 for the design and build of the, of the kitchen area. The kitchen at Station 1, when it was designed in 2004, uh, when it was redesigned in 2004, was not built for an engine and ambulance crew to be there 24/7/365, which is how we are today. So fast forward 20 years, we've got crews in there, a minimum of five people, um, every day, every minute. And, uh, when it was redone in 2004, residential-grade cabinets, countertops, and appliances were installed. So, um, you can imagine firefighters are hard on things, 20 years of breakfast, lunch, and dinner, seven days a week, uh, those things have taken, uh, taken a beating. So we even need to upgrade those, uh, kitchen and commercial cabinets and appliances, and felt that using this portion was, of, of the surplus funds was fiscally responsible. So in January of 2024, we met with procurement and, uh, developed an issue in RFP, RFP 24-103, that was created and listed on the procurement portal in the late January. Proposals were opened, uh, on February 28th, and we only received one successful bid at $90,000. Uh, the initial proposal was missing some information, but we felt it was responsible in talking to procurement to allow the contractor to come in and discuss exactly what, uh, he had planned and what was missing. So on March 13th, the contractor came in, met with myself, Chief Obarsky, uh, and Mike Low from procurement, and, uh, we went over some of their missing items and gave him an opportunity to submit those. Uh, on March 22nd, he did, um, but after further discussions with procurement and fire department staff, we just weren't comfortable with moving ahead with that contractor. And so on April 1st, a contractor was notified that we were not moving forward with him. The project was then further delayed because of the collective bargaining agreement negotiations and not knowing where that was gonna end up. So, uh, we were asked to put the project on hold, which we did. Due to time constraints and approaching the end of the year, procurement and fire department staff decided to reach out to two contractors that had been vetted and approved by the Wacom, by Wacomico County Government, whose pricing we could piggyback on to try to speed this up. One of the contractors failed to respond to our request, and the other contractor we met with in mid, mid-May. This contractor provided us a quote on May 31st, which was more than double of what the first contractor's bid was, and we didn't feel that it was fiscally responsible to proceed at that rate, even though we knew we would not be able to rebid the project by the end of the fiscal year. So discussed, we discussed it internally, that we would allow for the funds to be returned to the general surplus at the end of federal, uh, fiscal year 24, per the city charter, and come before you now, in early FY25, to request that 142,000 be returned to our buildings account, so that we may rebid the kitchen renovation, uh, project in FY25, and hopefully get a more fiscally responsible quote from a qualified contractor. So that's why I'm here tonight. Take any questions.
And I think you prefaced, you were here a couple of months ago in telling us that you were gonna be back to us to, to, to appropriate those funds.
Yeah, this, this was something that was discussed between procurement, uh, the fire department, and finance, uh, director at the time, um, on how to go about this. And, uh, rather than rush through irresponsibly and go with what we determined to be an unqualified contractor, or somebody that come to you for, for additional money, uh, upwards of 180,000, we felt that it was just best to let the money be returned to the surplus, come back and ask for it back, so we can go about this in a fiscal responsible, prudent manner. So that's why we're here.
Any other council comments, questions?
I would just say, this is making me terrified for doing my own kitchen. Having just gone through the nightmare of redoing a bathroom, I can tell you right now, this is not, you're not alone in this.
There is a little bit more involved in a commercial kitchen.
Yeah, obviously.
Council system, hood system, things like that, but, uh,
Yeah.
We are, we are gonna do it right this time, so that we're not back here 20 years looking for something.
With how many men?
There's, there's a minimum of five on duty at, at a time, sometimes six.
But how many men?
Over 20 years?
No, I'm, I know it's 20 years ago, I'm saying how many men in that building, off and on, that, that have benefited from?
Oh, oh, over the, over the 20 years? I mean, we have taken good care of it, for a residential kitchen to last with a minimum of staffing of five in that firehouse.
Yeah.
24/7/365 for it to be 20 years, and I know that the council president's been there and, and seen it, it's, uh,
I did, yes.
We've had, we've replaced a few dishwashers and the stove once or twice, but it's, it's nothing more than, than a house kitchen, and it
It is, yeah.
Needs to be beefed up like our other two stations.
Yes.
So.
Yes. We do have one, uh, public comment, Mr. Robert Taylor?
Well, excuse me.
Good evening, Robert Taylor, Salisbury resident, here to kill a couple of birds. The first is to support, uh, what the, uh, fire department wants, um, so I'll skip over that because it's been presented well. I do want to give them a shout out, um, I'm a former damage control officer on a destroyer. Uh, I was a month out of college and I became the fire chief on the ship. Uh, I did go to Navy firefighting school, the one-week version, not the one-day version that the seamen get. Learned how to use the oxygen breathing OBA apparatus, this was about 60 years ago, so you probably don't use them today. Um, so that's one thing I want to do. I also want to give a shout out to the other first responders, our police department. If I can just digress briefly, I had an interface with them this weekend. Not directly, I happened to be on a plane coming back from Boise, and you all had the storm, and it knocked out the power in our house, and apparently that flagged our alarm system to the police department, which is, I think is how it's supposed to work. It was a silent alarm, so it didn't alarm the neighborhood. But anyway, they took care of it very well. Uh, and again, I want to compliment them, we have good first responders. Now, at the next meeting, I would like to hear, however, why we're appealing from Judge Jackson's decision.
Oh, Mr. Taylor, thank you. Chief Frampton, thank you so much. Counsel, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Moving forward to our housing and community development director, Mr. Mirbota, talking about our, uh, the Truitt Street Community Center.
Yay!
And our director of DID.
Nick was excited, he wanted to come up and sit at the interrogation table tonight, so, but I thank him for being here. So this is kind of a joint project, because DID is managing the project for us. But we are nearing, uh, the finish line on the Truitt Street Community Center, and, uh, as, as with a lot of these projects, this has been something that's been going on for years, and, uh, as we know, uh, prices sometimes are not stable, uh, from when they initially, uh, budget things. So earlier, uh, this year, um, we, uh, identified some surplus funds, uh, in the prior fiscal year, uh, and we had it ready, but, uh, they used about $27,500 for the deck and relocation of HVAC. However, uh, several quotes, uh, uh, we did not receive everything back in time, uh, for the end of the fiscal year, but so that we could put an encumbrance in, or put a PO in, uh, to use that money, uh, and so we crossed fiscal years. And so with that, there were several items, uh, painting, uh, interior doors and windows, some appliances, and some shelving. And we are, uh, requesting, uh, $55,325 to come from a, uh, bond pool from 2022, uh, interest, uh, to be moved into the construction, uh, account, uh, for the Truitt Street Community Center. And this should, uh, with some contingency in there, uh, should, will cover all the items that we have, uh, left over. I know that there's some, uh, shelving that, uh, Boys and Girls Club needs as well, but I think maybe they might have reached out to you from, uh, and I think we'll be able to accommodate those, uh, requests as well.
Given this, uh, where, and I think that's where we pivot to you, um, Mr. Voitik, where does this put us at the timeline for completing this project?
Um, yeah, I think there've been a number of issues, there was a sort of, it, the project being done with federal funding led to, um, labor issue complexities, where the federal wage rates had to be complied with. The, uh, obviously a lot of this happened before I got here, but the project was bid out as multiple different projects, which led to, um, contracting issues, procurement issues, coordination issues. Uh, we have a lot of different trades underneath, different umbrellas of contractors at the site at one time. Again, it's led to coordination issues, uh, existing utilities have had to been relocated, which has caused, you know, cascading delays one on top of the other. Simple issues, seemingly simple issues, like the, the doors, that's one of the items that the money's going towards, um, that would seem like an off-the-shelf item, uh, has turned out to be, in some cases, more of a long lead item, where the doors are kind of unusual, not off-the-shelf, slightly complex, um, we have to go to different specialty door vendors to get the products ordered, uh, which maybe wasn't factored in in time, not factored into the whole project timeline if, uh, I think the door, you know, there are like seven or eight different projects, contracts within the project. And I think only a couple of months, three, four months were factored in, um, on something, again, simple like doors, but that, the ordering of the product itself takes longer than that because it's specialty items, so. Kind of a wide variety of different, uh, different items. I believe also some of the projects that were bid out, similar to the fire case, uh, you know, there was only one bidder, which leads to you having to select them, and, um, possibly inherent issues in, in that type of bid scenario, where, you know, you, you pick the guy who, who you have to do the work, and, you know, issues might come up later on. All those different six or seven things that I, I mentioned have fed into it, so.
So where does it put us as far as the timeline? Like, what, so, uh, as far as completing this, this project and allocating the funds, I know this was, I know this was a hurdle to get the funds allocated, where does that put us, um, working with the Boys and Girls Club to get this, to get this going?
I know we had told them that we would open by the end of August, I think that's still the goal at this point. Uh, some of the items, like the interior doors, things that aren't essential for the functioning of the building, uh, may be installed at a slightly later date with, um, just kind of using our city resources to do rough finishes, or some of the interior places, again, where, you know, the building can be functional. So I think the goal's still to try to open for them at the committed date, which, I don't have that exact date off the top of my head, but, uh, it's towards the end of this month, I believe. And then to come back in and, uh, which, I know they don't want that disruption necessarily, but, you know, obviously do it in a way as convenient for them as possible.
Sure.
Uh, once we get all the materials that are needed.
I think the, uh, the, the windows, the interior windows, which are kind of like bigger windows, uh, those are gonna be custom, so that's one of the items that are delayed. We did also, uh, Mike Zimmerman and his office, uh, will be directly ordering the doors and the windows, which will save us some money from some markup through the, the vendor. Uh, so we were able to find some cost savings in there as well.
Good, all right, well, tell them, get to ordering, we'll, we'll get, make that happen. I'm super excited, like I said, for no benefit but, but for the children in that community, so. Uh, thank you all for that, council, any other comments or questions? No? All right, seeing no public comments, uh, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, great, thank you. All right, switching gears, uh, an ordinance to amend chapter, uh, 12.04 of the city code by adding subchapter 12.04.080, which shall address the display of public art on city streets, sidewalks, and public places. Again, that ordinance is in the packet, brought forth by council. Just want to highlight a couple of things, and then I'll, I'll pivot to my, my council members for additional comments, so, um, uh, one in, uh, section A, so this is line 54, um, "Public art shall mean an original, site-specific artwork in any media existing in a single copy or in a limited edition, produced by an artist or by a team of artists, conceived and executed with the intention of being staged in a physical public domain, usually outside and accessible to all. Public art shall not include matters involving commercial and residential real estate development, including architecture." Then it goes forth to explain artwork, and then again, I think the main crux for this ordinance, which is labeled in, uh, section B, line 66, so, "All public art installed on city streets, sidewalks, and public places shall be, shall first be reviewed by the public art committee and shall be approved by mayor and council. Once installed, no public art shall be removed, altered, or changed without prior review of the public art committee and approval of the mayor and council." Line 72, "See, installation, maintenance, alteration, refinishing, and moving of public art shall be done in consultation with the artist or artists whenever feasible." So again, this is just a protecting public art ordinance, just to add in those clauses there. Counsel, I'll pivot to you all for any additional comments or questions.
I just, I'm sorry, let me get, okay. I, personally, this is just about me, um, I need to understand the process that, uh, needs to take place before a letter comes out to all of us or an ordinance, um, not specifically this one, but any in general, before it's adopted, because I think we have to have an informational discussion. And, uh, I have trouble voting or signing anything that I don't feel I have enough information, or that we've had a discussion among ourselves. So I'm not sure, I mean, it's not this one specifically, just in general, I feel that some discussion needs to take place on decisions that come before us, and the discussion before the vote.
Counsel member, that's what the work session's for, so, we, um, for us to have a public, uh, display of, um, questioning in, in, in front of the public, so that transparent display of it is meant for the work session, that's why it's not brought forth, because if, you know, this could just be brought to a legislative session and just be, and just be brought forth, but this is brought in front of a work session for us to talk about it, work out the kinks, yea, yere, nay, and then consensus, we're not actually voting on today.
Okay.
We're just, um, providing consensus to move this forward, yes or no?
Yes, I, I'd say yes.
Oh, I was just
Hello?
Well, I just, I, I want to touch on something, because this is, this is something that was, that I, I, has been brought to my attention. Current, uh, one of the current crosswalks that we have that is painted, it's not necessarily considered public art, it is considered commemorative art, um, simply because it, uh, commemorates, uh, an individual, organization, event, or topic. And in particular, the, the, in this case, the Pride Crosswalks. Those flags were created by another artist and just replicated on our sidewalks, and therefore is considered commemorative art. And what it commemorates, what those, what those flags symbolize and commemorate, um, so, is unfortunately, the disproportionate number of, um, issues that the LGBTQIA community faces. For instance, so far in the year 2024, just this year, the first eight months of this year, um, Maryland LGBTQ youth have experienced 39% LGBTQ attempting suicide. LGBTQ attempting suicide, forty-six percent trans children attempting suicide, forty-nine percent of the youth are bullied, fifty percent receive no medical care, thirty-two percent are homeless, and seventy-three percent are, feel alienated from their communities. So having something visible like this, being commemorative, I feel like we should add that word commemorative into there, if that's possible. I would like to, because also to keep in mind, there are other organizations out there like Salisbury University, if they in the future would like to make a crosswalk and use their logo, that's not original artwork, but it's commemorates their school. So I think that's having that, that language in there would be a good, good measure as well.
If there's consensus to include that, I can do that.
Good point. Thank you, Michelle.
Absolutely.
Members, any other?
So you're saying that the Art Council suggests something, but it is up to us to move it forward?
So this just brings another layer of protection so that the removal of art isn't into one, one body or the other? This is just so that, again, all parties are in agreeance that, yes, the Public Art Committee brings something forth, and that it can't just be removed by any, any one body or the other?
Yeah, I think my concerns is, is all the boards that are recommended or built for the, for the mayor's office, to make recommendations to the mayor's office, because we're the administrative body. And so it looks like now that, you know, again, I understand where the politics come from, but the idea of legislating an administrative board to have, now have legislative oversight or have legislative body oversight, let me finish, is inappropriate based on, but I will say this.
I want to make sure we get the rest of council comment before we, before we pivot just that way. Just as, I want to make sure we get the rest in, in that April, Council Jackson, Councilwoman Jackson, you had your, so this is, again, as a way to make sure, and again, by speaking with some of the Public Art Committee members, as a way to protect the art that is brought forth, that, again, not any one person can direct, or any one body, or any one person can direct for it to be removed or altered without consulting first.
It's, it's, oh, that's a lot. I mean, because, to me, I'm, I'm just.
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
Just I'll wait for Councilwoman Jackson. Are you done? Are you sure? Okay.
I'm getting ready to come back. I'll be back.
Okay. I just want to ask, like, this, how would this also protect, like, the Black Lives Matter section? How would, how would this, would that still, it would protect that?
So this is not, this is not any specific to any one, one piece of art or not?
It's just any art within the city?
Any art within the city.
Well, public art brought forth by the Public Arts Committee, and that's, again, that's defining it, display of public art on city streets, sidewalks and public places.
Okay.
Again, not your, your personal painting that's in your home, you know, you know, but this is public art brought forth by the Public Arts Committee, gone through that channel. Again, it was brought forth through the, through the certain avenues, then it, I feel that it should, you know, again, it, it needs to be protected and.
Now, would that be, I, I want to go to the commemorative?
Commemorative, yes.
Commemorative. So would, would the Black Lives Matter?
Yes.
Sign be the commemorative then?
Yeah, that would be commemorative.
Okay. So I'm just trying, because I'm learning some things here. So.
Yeah.
It is commemorative because it's something.
Okay. All right.
People remember and people want to remember.
Right.
So it's part of a his, it's part of history.
Right. Exactly. Exactly.
So if we add that word commemorative, it just, it just, I think, it, it sounds to me that it just protects the commemorative art, the noncommemorative art, that not just one individual or, or branch has the say to, to take it away or take it down or.
Right. Well, basically, basically, they have to go through multiple layers of approval to get approval for that, for, for the art to be installed. So it's just making sure that it's even both ways, so that if we want to uninstall something, then it goes through that same procedure, basically.
Women to my left, I want to make sure that your input is.
Review the procedure for me, how this is supposed to take place. When you're saying, Michelle mentioned the procedure, that either to put it in place or to remove it. What exactly is the procedure?
So the public, the Public Arts Committee, which we have a member here who can possibly speak to it, KT, they would go through the process of approving, selecting a piece of art to be on public display. They make the recommendation to the mayor and council, and then it moves forward. Okay. This, there, there are pieces of art that were installed prior to that system being put in place, when it was, when the Arts Committee was separate from the city. And now that it's been enveloped into the city in the, in the ABCD, it's, this is making it a little bit more uniform for everybody. So that's basically what we're trying to do, is making sure that we're establishing some sort of a protocol here to protect it. Once something is installed, it can't just be taken out on the whim of one individual or body with the city.
Once installed, no public art shall be removed, altered or changed without prior review of the Public Art Committee and approval of the mayor and council. So that's, I mean, that's, you're going through every check, you're going through every check you had to go through to get it done. You have to go through those, to those balances as well. I mean, I, I'm, this is.
Is that also like the murals that we have too?
Yes.
It's for all of that. I just.
It's all inclusive.
It's all of it. It's all of it.
This is, this is a.
Yes. Please chime in. Because I just feel like I'm learning some things, so I, any extra information would be very helpful.
This is all new, anyway.
We're learning real quick.
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
All right. So procedurally, how do we develop art as a, as a city, right? There's two entities that we're talking about. We're talking about stuff that's on city property and there's stuff that's on private development. The private development side of it, if someone wants to put a mural on the building that they own, they can do so by going through the historic commission review process. That, that is not dictated by ABCD, so if you wanted to do that, you would have the right to do that. That does not come before the Public Art Committee unless they would ask for advice on it. That being said, we don't, we don't have the authority to tell someone not to do that, right? What we're referring to here are pieces of art on city property that, you know, we've, we've either got donated to us and then we move and we say, do we want to move this? Or, you know, is, for instance, the Salisbury Prize, which we just did a whole process, we were getting the, the new sculpture down at the city park. The, the advantage of putting these assets on our city property is now it becomes our responsibility to maintain those assets, to keep them up to a standard. Also tracking it, you know, is it have somewhere in terror? Where do we find the funds? Get it into a plan of a queue to take care of later. What I think is important here, and we're, we're talking functionality of, of how we go through this, in the Public Art Master Plan, which I would refer you to, is this, is this beautiful flow chart that talks about this, right? You have city projects and then you have community projects. City projects are projects that are arts business and culture, DID and HCDD recommend one project per year. We put it in queue and Public Art Committee will review those projects. Simultaneously, community projects are from the community. As I said, we get people that will send in applications, hey, I think this is a great idea, or an nominee artist, I would like to do this. Those go in the queue to review. All of that is dictated by money, right? Like, to do these bigger projects, it could be thirty thousand, it could be sixty thousand, it could be five thousand. It's, they're all over the place, right? What's important is there is a step that, that I want to make sure you all are aware of that happens before it goes to the Public Art Committee, and that's the Technical Advisory Committee. That consists of people of staff in the city who quite literally look at this space. They're not, they're not grading on criteria of context or anything like that. They're looking at the space. Can this physically be here? A great example of that is the, the Salisbury Prize. We, we narrowed it down, the tag group took thirty applications or some number and narrowed it down to five or six. It actually made sense for the space. What's in the ground? Where's the locates at? You know, what's the longevity of this? Because we are taking in that maintenance factor of this too. From there, it does go to the Public Art Committee for their review, and their review is, is different. Their review is context. Is it right for the community? How are we going to curate artists? How do we get feedback from the community? Does the community even want it? So in this language that you're proposing, there are elements within here of review process, right? Instead of saying, like, let's get to the end game and decide if this is the right course to go, there could be another function within the review process here that allows for that input to happen. Now, this is installation, right? And I'm not talking preservation. But from that Public Art Committee, they say, like, these are the ones we really like, let's explore them further, which we do, which comes to me as a recommendation. At that point, I would go to the administrative office and say, like, it's just something we all want to support. So that's the process as it lies, okay?
Thank you.
It, it is involved. I just want to make sure it is involved for a purpose, because we want to make sure we check all those boxes and feel good about it, considering we are sometimes using operational funds to do these projects.
Absolutely.
Make sure it was done right.
And just to make a mention, there is no process for the preservation, like, there's no, is there anything in place for the preservation of said art by a tag, by Public Arts Committee?
Uh, not necessarily. It's.
I think just what happened with the mural from the city center was, they wanted to remove it and they wanted to move it. And so you came to us and said, here's a couple of locations, and we were committed, that's what we did in that. So.
They, they want to put up a new mural, which is fine. It's their property, they can do that, but we understand and we respect that mural. So in order for us to move it, we should own it. That's why they're donating it to us.
Right, right, right.
So we can actually relocate it.
You just hit the nail on the head with that right there. Yeah, exactly. And it can be moved and it's brought to council to.
Right.
Funny, donate.
Well, for the donation, yeah, exactly.
Yes.
Yes.
Which council had to prove, which, again, mayor's office, so it's, it's that partnership there. So again, that's where this, again, the, the preservation of, and that's where we, again, if you have any ideas or tidbits, or if we can add anything to that, that very involved graph that is there, but there's nothing for the preservation of, and that's where this ordinance comes into play, where, you know, again, we have, if it's that involved for it to happen, it, it, it can be easily altered without the artist, and the artist puts this much work into it and this much money into it, there has to be something at play. And right now, we're, we're operating without anything being on the books. And I think that, that, that is irresponsible of us as a city.
Yes.
And you're also saying that one person does not have control over, say, the aspect of the mural being moved.
Yes.
Or replaced.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and again, in that resolution three, two, eight, three, is that right?
Yes.
Did I get it right?
Good for you.
Yeah, it's been a while. There are definitions in there on commemorative art and public art and those pieces, so I think that's where.
Yeah. That's, yeah, that's where I was coming from.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's a functionality to it that we just, I'm a process person. So we developed, we worked very hard on this process. So to change without a lot of conversation, honestly, for, for me or the administrative side of it is a little kind of like, whoa, okay, what is our next step? So I appreciate you asking that question because that was my question.
Yeah.
What do we, what does that formal process look like? I think we can all agree that we want to protect our art. I mean, invested in it as a beautiful part of our community.
The, the intent is not to alter too much into the actual art being installed. That was just some, some legal we worked into there. So maybe we'll alter it a little bit. But yeah, that, that's not the, the intent is to focus on the preservation of, and, and not the actual installation.
Sure.
Of, of the public art we've got out there, the Purdue, the Purdue mural, these are all private buildings. Most of them are on private buildings, except for the parking garage, which we're getting ready to do now, right?
I've explored it, yeah. Most of the murals downtown aren't, don't belong to the city.
Yeah, right.
They're on private development.
The process was more to improve the art rather than it was the, the ownership of that art, so.
Yeah, the one on the VFW, that is, it's their building.
Yep, it's their art.
But that's the city.
Yeah, because we, we bid out, we paid for, the city paid for that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's where it gets.
This is why you created our department?
Yes.
Yes.
Because there's been a lot of moving pieces in the art world.
Yeah, this, this gets very.
And when you start talking about city allocated funds to start being involved in these developments, having those right contracts, having this stuff in plain language that we understand, once this is up, whose responsibility is it going forward?
Right.
And conversely, when you're talking about public property that is being maintained by private individuals and organizations.
Yeah.
You know, there's, 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 it's kind of a knot that unfortunately you inherited now, because these, a lot of these projects happened before the, even the inception of that department. So, you know, we've got, we've got art that is being maintained by individuals that is on public property and things that are operated or, or created by the city that are on private property. So it's kind of.
Yeah, because they've been asked not to move, remove it, not to ever remove it without the say-so of the city. But I don't think they would ever move it anywhere because it means a lot to them.
Well, and the other piece too, having the arts with KT, having somebody review and having you as well, Alan, when you have some type of oversight, then that's protecting what people are looking at. And it doesn't, doesn't need to be my choice or your choice, but when you have the committee working with you, then you cover all your bases.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. They're a great team too. I mean, and, and trust me, they're, they're vocal and they're passionate, and that's what we wanted out of them. We wouldn't have.
Eclectic team.
Yeah, we wanted to be challenged on all, all the decision points. Been great with that.
Thank you, Alan. Counsel, any other comments or additions? Okay. We, we have two public comments. Go to you, KT first.
Well, I'm KT. I am Sharon's neighbor.
District three.
I'm glad that there is.
Good district, huh, KT?
Huh?
Good district to be in.
It's the best district. It's the only district.
Um, so having this mechanism in place to preserve art that existed before the creation
of our, of his department is important. I mean, we can't just go through and take away art that somebody else paid for, got permission to put on public property. Now, taking that away is going to be a problem. And here's what I've realized over the last couple of months. Not many people know why those were put there in the first place. They were put there to commemorate the lives lost in the LGBTQ community, including Salisbury, to hate crimes, violence, suicide. Unfortunately, PFLAG just didn't really make that a, a big deal. So you're really doing a disservice to the community to paint over those. You are saying that those lives don't matter. So we want to talk about Black Lives Matter. I agree, people want to remember. And that is something that should be protected with every inch of our human existence. So, and I really appreciate, Michelle, you bringing up the commemorative. I really do, because that's really what this is. Because I would still love to put a memorial downtown to Bull. I mean, who doesn't want to commemorate that guy? And this gives us a mechanism to protect that in the future. You know, sure, we can, I can give my advice to you guys and to, to the mayor. Of course, I can't make you do anything, but I can give you my honest, expert advice. And with this change to the ordinance, we can now do that. We can now go to Alan and say, hey, Alan, this is what we think of this. He can then come to you and to, tell you guys all the same thing. And you can have a discussion and come up with a solution. So now we have that, we can have that mechanism. So I'm in support of this. Please pass it, and I'm always around to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Breton? Lynn Bratton.
It's not my choosing, my mother is haunting me with it. Good evening, my name is Lynn Bratton, and I am resident at seven, no, that's what I wrote, at 303 South Boulevard in Salisbury, Maryland. I have no real issues with what's going on here with this. I am sorry that we lost that beautiful mural at the end of the Avery Hall Building, but that was on private property, and it got painted over, I guess. It would have had the Big Eagle and the, and the Salisbury University on it, all of a sudden, here today, gone tomorrow. But my, my one concern, and it was mentioned, that any, any artwork placed on private property does have to come before the Historic Commission, and it doesn't seem that any of the artwork placed on public property has that same layer of approval required. I'm not sure why that is the case, perhaps there's an answer, but I do sit on the Historic Commission, so I noticed that inconsistency, and it was mentioned in the process that was just reiterated, that private people who want to put, if you own the building, you want to paint something on it, you have to present it to the Historic Commission before something can be painted on a building, or in any way installed on the building, a signage, whatever, but that doesn't seem to be part of the process with your public comment, with your public process, and I don't know why. So if it's fair for one, it should be fair for the other. I kind of think maybe they ought to have to come before the Historic Commission also. That's my two cents, and I'll let you guys make that decision.
Thank you. Robert Taylor. And we'll just remind that, again, we're addressing the display of public art on city streets, sidewalks, and public places.
And to that end, let me say, Robert Taylor, Salisbury, Maryland, I'm not an art expert or an artist, but I'm married to someone who taught art at the high school level here, and also at the college for over 40 years, has an MFA degree. And I will say that some of the things that have been mentioned tonight, I don't think anybody with any education in art would consider art. For example, the paintings on the street, it's not art, it's some sort of a design, maybe, it's really a propaganda statement. And, and this is what I'm concerned about. I think what we're trying to do here, or what may be the behind this, is to essentially legitimize propaganda. We've heard the Black Lives Matter, we've heard gay rights, I mean, that's not art, just because you want to do something like that. I would support a memorial to Bull, but it wouldn't be art. And if you're going to approve a memorial to Bull, or to anybody else, or to any other group, do that by an ordinance. Don't do it by some committee that may or may not know a lot about art. And if you want to specialize in art, make sure it's art. There is real art. And that's my concern with what you're doing here. This commemorative, as soon as that got into it, that set me off. I didn't come here to speak about that, but that's the concern, is what you're trying to do is legitimize propaganda. Good night.
Going back, council, any other remarks, questions, comments, anything that should be added? I know we have the commemorative piece there. Councilwoman DeShield, I know you had a question, a question about something, was that answered process?
Alan, the process, Alan explained it.
Explained it, perfect.
And my other question, as I said, is, is the discussion, I think it's, whether it be anything that we have, that comes before us, I think it's imperative that there is discussion among all members before action is taken.
I agree, but also, I think the public would like us to have the discussions in the.
Oh, I don't mind having it in front of them either. I don't have a problem with that. It's being, it's being informed, not only for us as individuals, but also the public that is in attendance.
We, we, it is, it is my intent to have the agendas published on Wednesday, they are, some holds on the administration in the city side with getting those published early, but it is, it is the intent to have those published by Wednesday at noon, so we'll make sure that that happens, so that we can, you all have ample time to review the agendas before it's published. Council, do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.